We will go ahead and get started since it's 5:30 and we will start with a roll call.
Present.
Present.
Here.
Here.
Great, thank you. And we will look at moving to that session, section, session, so I need a motion to recess to executive session.
Mr. President, I move the Board of Education USD 501 recess into executive session for thirty minutes to discuss confidential personnel matters to protect the privacy of the individual employees to be discussed pursuant to the personnel exception of the Kansas Open Meetings Act. The board will return to open session in the boardroom at 6:02 PM. The superintendent and executive staff are invited into executive session.
Sir Second, Ms. Bulleye. Any discussion? Okay, we'll move to vote.
Vote is open. Vote is open. And I'll mark Dr. Beeson not present and the votes are in motion carries.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, we're gonna have thirty minutes and a minute thirty one.
What am I supposed to need? This is silly cake. What am I supposed to need? This is your call. Mr. Zoom call.
For those on YouTube, the executive session has been extended for 15 minutes. The board will return at 6:18 to open session. Thank you. For those on YouTube, the executive session has been extended for 15 minutes. The board will return at 6:18 to open session. Thank you.
Okay, it is six eighteen. So I'm going to call us back to order and hopefully we have. Um, maybe our McCarter friends for the Pledge of Allegiance or.
We have a video ready for the pledge and if not, we have uh ready for the pledge.
Mr. Bunnials.
The no, the Union President uh is here. This will be one of his first meetings or second meetings, right? No, your third meeting.
Third meeting.
All right.
Yeah, Mr. Livingston can come up.
Let's uh make sure.
Let's do it together.
Knows who our uh Union President is Chef Livingston. Can you get us all the way over here? Chef Livingston, come on this way. You know, this gives us for those that are listening an opportunity to shine the light on people that are in our space. So hello. So we're gonna all do the pledge together.
All right, if you'd all stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
So good.
Okay, um, so we will move on to section four, uh adoption of the agenda, and I just need a motion for that.
The board adopt the agenda as presented.
Is there a second? Dr. Bonebreak, thank you very much. Any discussion on the agenda? See none, we'll move to the vote.
All votes are in and the motion carries.
Thank you, Mrs. Lister. Um, there's no school highlights tonight, and so I'll move down to public communications.
And there are also no public.
There are no public communications, so we will move down to business by consent, and so I will need another motion.
All right, Mr. Chair, I would like to move um that we remove item twelve or twelve point one. The consultant contract from the consent agenda for a separate discussion or vote and um but other than that. We'd have to have a second to do that.
Uh, uh, other than that, you would move uh the consent.
For to yeah, to do the consent agenda.
Yep. Is there a second on that? Dr. Bonebreak.
I want to vote on that separately. I don't want.
Yeah, we can we can vote on it after this section. Is there further discussion on that motion? Okay, we'll vote on the consent agenda minus twelve point one.
The vote is open. All right, there's one not present and five yay and one nay. The motion carries.
Okay, thank you. Just to clarify, Ms. Lister, is Dr. Beeson not present currently?
It she is not on.
Okay. Okay, so we'll move back to twelve point one. Um, and I'll look for a motion on twelve point one. Anybody can make that motion. It doesn't have to be our vice president.
I'm trying to decide how do I create that motion. I make a a motion that we vote to approve.
Yep.
Contract on twelve point one.
Yep. Is that your motion?
That's my motion.
Okay, and then I just need a second for that motion. Dr. Bonebreak, seconds. Is there further discussion on twelve point one with that motion on the table?
I do. I do. I do want to make a comment.
Yep.
Um, so while I have immense respect um for Larry Robbins. And we did talk about where this funding does come a little bit. It is coming from some grant stuff. Um, but I still believe. With the incoming candidates, education and expertise in our current leadership team. Um, I'm confident they could work together to navigate our existing processes effectively. Um, this is just not something I can support, so.
Thank you. Is there other discussion? Okay, seeing none, and I'm not sure if. Uh, Ms. Lister, will you let us know if Dr. Beeson comes back online? Just because I have trouble tracking that. Okay, seeing none, we'll move to a vote for twelve point one.
The vote is open and I will mark her not present. And this is for item twelve point one only.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, and the motion carries. There's one not presented vote at vote, one nay, and five yay.
Thank you. Um, so moving down, um, I think that's our business by consent, so we'll move to the superintendent's report.
All right, as we start with an update very briefly, we have a one minute video from this week. This is the update. Summer school is over. However, we have still summer feeding. If you were at the zoo, then um. That uh activity was uh in full blast of feeding three hundred families that came in, but we do want to mention that the camp at Chase. Kicked off this week. If you would like to play basketball, go there tomorrow. This is the last day, and we're gonna turn it over to Dr. Gray from here. Uh, and we'll try to pull that video up really quickly. It's just a one minute piece from yesterday. So this camp is all sponsored by sponsors, so. Kids don't have to pay. They get free lunch when they come. Um, and um, the camp itself is done by one of our staff members. Other staff members also volunteer. Mr. Robbins and team uh help with the sponsorships as do the uh camp itself. So Gibbs Elite, Miss Gibbs, really. Secures all of the resources and uh with the support of Mr. Robbins, this camp is uh just kicked off this week. Yes, sir.
Tonight, Gibbs and I'm with Gibbs Elite Basketball Camp. This is our fifth year. This is just something that's very near and dear to me to give back to the community. You know, they're just amazing kids and I get to teach them from fifth grade to eighth grade.
She approached the district and wanted to do something to help develop the skills of our younger athletes. But also give the five oh one kids something to do in the summer. The numbers keep growing each and every year. The number of volunteers, also the community participation, sponsorships, year in and year out.
We have served hundreds of kids and these kids are just marvelous. It's great to break down those barriers, not only with the kids. And the relationship with the SROs and we just hope that we can continue. It is all donations and um we just want to say thank you.
It is so fun and we got a lot of people here. We're loving about movies. Uh, we got friends and stuff here. And it's just a fun experience.
We have kids from all across the district, from all the middle schools, uh for all of our elementary schools. And it's amazing just to see how much they learn through over the years. Something positive, something fun, something that they can learn and grow from. A lot of them continue to come back and that's the most exciting part of it all.
All right, we want to thank all those partners that are listening in for contributing to about seventy young people having a full camp and meal uh every day this week. It's been pretty remarkable. And with that intrigue, we're gonna turn it over to Dr. Gray, who's gonna talk about what's gonna be happening in about three weeks as we get ready to start the academic school year.
Okay, I don't. Okay, it looks like the PowerPoint. Again, good evening Board of Education and Dr. Anderson. It's a pleasure to be with you this evening as we prepare to launch the twenty twenty five school year. Tonight I will be sharing a few highlights that reflect our continued commitment to keeping families informed, engaged, and connected. I'll begin by highlighting the various communication tools and strategies we use throughout the year to strengthen the family and community partnerships. Additionally, I'll provide an overview of our back to school activities as we work to ensure that every student, staff member, and family feel welcome, supported, and well prepared for the start of a school year. Before I begin, I'd like to take a moment to introduce our wonderful communications team. We have Ms. Phoebe Nordike, who's our communication specialist, Ms. uh Fleck Tally, who's the communication coordinator, and Mr. Michael Williams, who you have there, who's the excellent videographer. Uh, we have Mr. Darren Wallace, who's our web support, and we also have Mr. uh Fabian Hernandez in the back, who's also the communications person as well, who's great when it comes to our social media. Thank you. This dedicated group works tirelessly behind the scene to keep our families, staff, and community informed, connected, and engaged. Whether it's coordinating press releases, producing content for social media, creating award winning videos, updating our website, or ensuring timely district wide messaging, their work. Is essential to our success. Effective and timely communication is a top priority in Topeka Public Schools. Guided by our district strategic plan, we're committed to increasing transparency, building trust, and strengthening our partnership with families and community partners. To accomplish this, we have a variety of communications tools that capture that we that are captured in how we communicate with families document. That is posted on our website. If you go to our website and you look under district news, you'll see uh this uh document captured. As well as it's a document that we share with families throughout the year. In terms of communication tools, the district and each school maintains a website with announcement calendars, news, photos, and more. We have a student information system synergy where families can access student grades, student attendance, class schedules, and payments, as well as fees. In terms of social media, uh we have Facebook and we're proud to announce that just last year, this year, uh we grew in our social media, Facebook. Uh, by over twenty two hundred followers. Uh, Twitter, uh, we also have Instagram as well as YouTube. We also have our KTVS television station, broadcast station, as well as the cable station, um, channel fourteen. In terms of publication, we have our community news. It's our biweekly electronic newsletter that is emailed to all TPS staff members. Uh, families and also to community partners. Uh, and then we have our district annual calendar and parent handbook. Lastly, we have our district mobile app, and I know that uh we've had some people that have inquired about the mobile app. In order to access that mobile app, you you can go to uh the App Store or Google Play and you can search for Topeka Public Schools. You can download that app and it gives you access to. The many activities that are going on in Topeka Public Schools. And finally, we have an email updates. We have email updates, text messages, and also automated phone calls. These tools allow us to reach families in real time, share important updates, and celebrate the many great things that are happening in our school and in our district. In terms of highlights, we're excited to welcome our newest educators to Topeka Public Schools during new staff orientation. Uh, it begins on July twenty eighth. It's July twenty eighth through the thirty first at Bishop's. So again, we welcome our new staff. Also, this year, we're celebrating our commitment to sustainability as we introduce several EV buses to our fleet uh in October with a ribbon cutting. On Wednesday, August sixth at one o'clock at Stormont Valley Event Center, we will welcome back over twenty two hundred staff members as we kick off our district annual convocation. As always, we begin with student first. We have our keynote speaker, Lane Shutter. He's an eighth grade college prep scholar and an entrepreneur. He will be our speaker. We also have Meet the Teacher Night, which is held across the district K five on Monday, August eleventh. And then we have the first day of school, first day of school, which is August twelfth, and that's for our transitional grades, kindergarten, sixth, and ninth grade, as well as August thirteenth. That's when we bring back all students K twelve. And then finally, our family fitness fun night, which many of you know about, is held at Hammer on Wednesday, September twenty fourth from five thirty to eight. It's an event that promotes health, wellness, and family engagement through active participation. And I would be remiss if I didn't mention also, although it's not captured on the slide, is uh we have on Saturday, August second. Uh, our United for Successful School Year. That's our annual uh collaboration with um uh clergy as well as other community organizations. They come and they will be at Ross Elementary. At eight o'clock to ten o'clock and they will be doing haircuts and they'll be giving out free supplies and other community resources as well. This year, we've updated our cell phone policy to support a more focused learning environment and to ensure all students stay engaged and supported throughout the school day. Therefore, we've outlined several communication strategies, strategies, excuse me, to ensure that all stakeholders are informed of these new expectations. So what we plan to do, we have a document that is before you, and we plan to make sure that everyone understands what those expectations are. So we've outlined several ways in which we're going to uh make sure those uh expectations are highlighted and promoted. To just share a few with you, we'll make sure that they are on the Topeka Public Schools webpage under district news. Uh, also, under each school's webpage, under parent information, we will make sure that those expectations are captured there. Also, on the Board of Education webpage, community news, student handbook, and again, that document is before you, so I won't list them all. But lastly and finally. Uh, we will encourage principals to provide professional development and guidance on cell phone policy implementation and how to address those uh concerns as well. In closing, as we begin the twenty twenty five school year, our commitment remains clear. Ensuring that every student, staff, member, and family feels connected, supported, and informed. Through intentional communication and thoughtful and strategic planning, we're playing, we're laying a strong foundation for a successful year ahead. Thank you for your continued partnership and support as we work together to serve Topeka Public Schools community. Are there any questions?
Thank you, Dr. Gray. Are there questions or comments for Dr. Gray? Yeah, Ms. Bulley.
I have two actually, one on the school websites. Are the schools responsible to keep that up to date and how is that supported or? Um, expectations of keeping those up to date?
Yes, ma'am. So uh to answer your question, there's a partnership between the school and central office, which again, we have web support through. Mr. Wallace as well as other communications, our other communications uh individuals, they uh support the website as well. Um, so I know at the school level, they have individuals that are responsible for the website, but we also support the website and we go in and make sure. If there's something that needs to be updated, we do uh go in and make sure that those uh items are updated uh as well.
And those example of those items?
Would be handbooks, like when handbooks come out, we go in and we make sure that uh those are posted on their website. Uh, just recently, we uh made sure that every school had um a logo. And so if you go on their website now, you'll see that each school has a branded logo. All of them have been district uh branded. Uh, we go in and uh if there's photos that need to be changed out, uh because we have access to so many photos being in and out the school and around the district. Uh, we also go and update that as needed. Um, so there are many things that we do in collaborations with the school to make sure that the uh websites stay updated.
That's great, because I think those websites are really important to the families that attend those schools.
Yes, ma'am.
And so I think that is like a great frontline for our families. So when they get behind. Or don't look fresh, then um I think that can be a frustration. The other question I had, do we have a phone line that calls every family's household in the district?
Yes, ma'am. So what happens when uh families register, um, the number that is captured on file. Is the number that when we send out communications to families, uh those families receive communications. So again, it's based on the number that. You have within the system, which is synergy. Uh, am I correct on that, Mr. uh run Scoop Messenger? Yes.
Now, one of the things we will, you remember, all of you all remember, I think it was your first year, Ms. Schmidt, when I made that lovely phone call for snow days. And people didn't like that at two in the morning or one in the morning, whatever time it was, and Ms. Schmidt had to say, well, she. Remember, she was up at one in the morning to inform you. So what we now do is to ask families, do they want a phone call? So what we now do is to ask families, do they want a phone call, or a text message, or just an email? Um, so that people can really pick. So not everybody may get the call, but we use those calls for chronic absenteeism. Now, those are phone calls, but for the most part, other messages, it really depends on what parents selected as their choice of, uh, communication.
I, I was just wondering if that is also a good way to reach out to families, uh, right before school starts about this cell phone policy? Um, that they have an immediate information on it before there's a problem when their kids walk through the door on the first day of school.
You know, perhaps what we could do, and if I may, Dr. Gray, you know, is one, the call really is the reminder that it's the first day of school. And while you're coming, we have a, you know, new policy. Here's where you find it. Remember, don't bring your cell phone. If you bring it, please look at our policy. So perhaps we can combine all of that in some way, that the phone call is really, please remember to return. And, you know, if you, um, and if you know someone who's not registered, remind them to register. So we'll look at what we can craft.
Yes, ma'am.
In that regard, and get those messages out. We, we could also even say, and if you would prefer not to get phone calls, please change your registration and indicate that accordingly for future, um, call services. Thank you for that suggestion, and we'll update you when we send that out. We'll do it a week before, so, before school starts.
And Ms. Bulley, also to your point, if you look at number eight, uh, one of the things that we had planned to do, Meet the Teacher Night, uh, when families come to the school, we were going to also make sure that that's communicated, as well as in their newsletters, uh, the school newsletters to families. So those are some other pieces that were going to happen, not just on the district level, but at the school level, to make sure that parents are informed.
I just think every way we can reach out to them is really important on this policy, since we have a progressive.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, consequence.
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, I just want to make sure that, you know, we are not, um, taking that ability away from them on the first couple days of school. They know before it ever starts that this is what is happening in our school buildings.
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Schmidt.
And to build on that, how they get a hold of the school? So I think that's an important piece, right? That anxiety about if you don't let me, uh, message my child, if you're requiring that their phones be away, then how do I get a hold of them? And that will be a school-to-school thing. So making sure that the schools are communicating that, you know, whether they're handing out a card, you know, that here's the phone number that you call, and making sure we've got to guarantee them that somebody is going to answer that phone. Because if they call the school with an emergency and they get thrown in a tree, a calling tree, we are going to hear, never hear the end. I, you know, I, I don't like it on a normal day, you know, when I'm trying to get help. But if, if parents have the anxiety because something is going on, you know, we, we've got to make sure that at every school, there's a number that people are answering that phone, and we need to make sure that parents have that number available to them.
Definitely will remind them. And then I'll ask Ms. Sharp, Mr. Dick, and Ms. Hoffman to actually collect how schools have done that, so that I can send that back out to you all, so you'll know, oh, yeah, French has, they gave out cards, or, or whatever the case may be. Um, so we'll, we'll ask them what that is. And again, it may not be perfect, but at least you'll know there's a system confirmed. So we'll make sure we do that. Thank you.
Mr. Munoz.
And, you know, the other thing is that because this is about the culture around cell phones and its usage, it isn't just an issue for students, right? Even though that's our main focus, is that it might be helpful for us to, um, share with parents ways that they can help their students, you know, by us, myself as a parent, having, being a good example for, for them, um, and other ways, you know, just some, something for, if I was a parent, I like to be able to know what are other resources, and how can I learn more about helping be a better example for our students on when it's appropriate and when it's not. And all of us, as, as adults, recognizing that we're, we're a good example for them. If we're expecting them to be, you know, have good behavior and expectations in classrooms, where are the places that we might sort of ask ourselves, how can I do better? And, and be a good example for, for our students, so?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Thank you for that. You know, I guess we hadn't really thought about this, but on the Meet the Teacher Night, we could have, what's the cell phone policy, and what's the why come in this room? You know, especially for high school and middle, and I bet your parents will come in and stop in that session. So then that is the opportunity to do what you just said, Mr. Munoz. Parents, here's how y'all can help us, and that's really what that's about. Oh, and here's the policy. Here it is in your hand. Here's where it is on the website. If you don't have internet, here's the actual policy. So we'll look at how, particularly at the secondary level, but all levels, how we can incorporate that education into that space. Thank you, all of you, for the suggestions.
Ms. Bulley.
I, I forgot to also say, when I first got on the board in twenty, what, eighteen, nineteen? I don't know when. Whenever that was, we had a lot of complaints about communications from the school. And that is something I don't receive anymore. Most people are very happy with the communications, and I just wanted to give your department kudos for reaching out in every way possible that you've been able to think about, so that parents are being informed. And I think that communication piece has been reached to the most part. So thank you for all that hard work and following through with those concerns and making it possible for parents to find information if they just get out there and look for it on almost any, almost any social media page. You'll find communications for parents. So thank you so much for all this hard work.
Dr. Gray's team has won multiple national awards under his leadership that we had not earned before, uh, under INSPIRA, National School Public Relations. And, uh, he and Mr. Williams and Ms. Hernandez and, uh, and the entire team, Ms. Flectally and Nordike, uh, they've won awards for the C News, the Annual Report, Videography. So they are tremendous and exceptional. You have done and continue to do an excellent job. Thank you, and to the team.
Thank you.
All right. The PowerPoint that's coming up now is on the FUSIS Center. So you may be wondering, if you're listening, what is FUSIS? And we're so glad you asked that question, because Chief Cochran will be sharing a little bit about what it is as that PowerPoint comes up. And then, uh, board members, we're really turning it over to you to have conversation about what you'd like to see happen in this space, if you'd like to see us move forward. It's really a, um, a discussion for today, but also something that you can give us by consensus, some ahead nod, and it may come back for a vote the next time. I'll turn it over to Chief Cochran.
Uh, School Board and Superintendent, thank you for the opportunity. Can provide you some information on what FUSIS is and, uh, what it can do. Whoa, that is small.
And we'll enlarge that screen. While you're talking, we'll enlarge it, uh, in real time.
So, uh, the FUSIS Center, what it is, it's a real-time crime center in which, uh, it's a platform in which it utilizes camera systems throughout the city of Topeka, uh, in Shawnee County right now. And a feed goes into the sheriff's office, and when there's a nine-one-one call, or if there's a crime or something like that, uh, has been committed, these cameras can be brought online, and you can get real-time, uh, on-scene footage of what's taking place. Uh, several of you came down to the sheriff's office and visited, uh, uh, FUSIS Center. You got to look at what it did and what it can do, uh, right now. Uh, Topeka Public Schools is the only school system that is not involved in the FUSIS Center and the Real Crime Center. So what, uh, this does is allows access to the sheriff's office to be able to monitor cameras. And we would set up an agreement that they would not have full unfeathered access to the camera system. Um, they would, the agreement that they like is the outer perimeter ones. They could have access to that, because things happen around the school. And our camera system that we have upgraded to over the last couple years is a tremendous system, and it's, uh, real high resolution. Yeah, the cameras inside the school, uh, would only be activated when we notify them to activate them, or if there's a nine-one-one call that activates the CAD system, it notifies the FUSIS Center, and then they can come online with those cameras that we have. So one of the things that we are looking at is the Elite Core. The Elite Core can host a hundred and eighty cameras. What's really great about our camera system that feeds into one central location. And, um, so what we would do is the core would tap into our system. We've had conversation with Mr. Reindmark in IT, and, uh, I think he feels pretty comfortable where we're at right now. But if we do one of these cores, it would be a hundred and eighty cameras in the district that we could bring online. The schools that we would bring online is still open for discussion as to which ones what we would look at. Um, but again, the, the sheriff's office would like access to the outside cameras. So if we did, just say, for example, twenty cameras at four different schools, that would give us, you know, a hundred and sixty cameras that we could then determine what we want to bring online. And by bringing online, what that means is if there's an event that happens, say in the main hallway at Topeka High, they can come up, they can bring that up, they can look and see what's going on, and they can direct resources, whether that's law enforcement, fire, or if it's a medical response. You know, we had the situation at Topeka High a couple years ago with a, a teacher, uh, you know, that could have been very helpful in that event. But again, it's not just for law enforcement, it's for first responders as a whole, and provides a much safer environment for our students and our staff that are working in the schools.
So board members, with that overview, uh, we turn it over to you, if you visited or didn't visit, to have discussion about what you saw, the value of it, and, uh, if there's direction you'd like to see us begin to take, uh, as we prepare for this year, uh, we'd love to get your feedback. And, uh, Chief is going to stay to answer any questions about cost or anything else that you might have. And I believe technology folks can certainly speak in, uh, from the Technology Committee. So we'll turn it over to you, Dr. Schumacher.
Thank you. Are there questions or discussion? Mr. Tatum.
So Chief Cochran, I think I might have been the only board member that didn't go on a FUSIS. Okay. I think I was double booked that day for something. So how, how, how do we go about, those of us that didn't go the first time, how do we go about setting up something else? I know you and I talked about it briefly, but I, that was several months ago. Maybe you can refresh me on what we can do to kind of, uh, firm that up.
Yeah, those of you that have not been, uh, I can set up an appointment, and we can get you down there anytime. They're, they're very open to that, because they really want us to be a part of this, so.
Good.
Uh, anytime you want to go down there, we can get that set.
So, Ms. Schmidt, did you say you hadn't gone?
She had contact.
You have the contact. Who, who hasn't gone? Okay, Dr. Bonebrake. So maybe you and I, do, do you remember, did, did Dr. Beeson go?
Uh, I don't believe so.
Okay, so maybe between the three of us, we can coordinate with you on when we can go back and visit.
We can make that happen, no problem.
Okay, great, thank you.
Ms. Bulley.
I have two questions. The medical response, uh, emergency response, will they have pictures to see also? Or does your, uh, organization contact them and give them information as they're arriving?
So when a nine-one-one call, nine-one-one call comes in, it'll activate the FUSIS Center. The FUSIS Center could then help direct response as to where, you know, where the hallway, or what classroom, or, you know, wherever it may be, whatever they have access to view. And that information is relayed to the dispatcher, who then can notify, uh, medical response and fire response as to where, uh, and what resources may be needed.
But they're not having the photos. You're just able to guide them, uh, much quicker.
Yes, the FUSIS Center are allowed to provide real-time information.
Basically, your center is where the photos stay.
Correct.
It's not like goes out to medical response or everybody else. It's, it's right there.
It's the.
Guarded by, by that organization there.
Yes.
My second question is funding. What does the funding look like? Uh, what is the, what is our district responsible for?
So the core that we're looking at that hosts a hundred and eighty cameras is seventy-three hundred dollars. And then there's a twenty-three hundred dollar per year subscription fee. But that first year is covered in the initial seventy-three hundred. So after the first year, it'd be twenty-three hundred for the year, uh, for a hundred and eighty cameras.
Can I follow up that question? Um, with other cores, does the subscription price go up? Or is that the same subscription, no matter how many cameras are online?
So if we do the, it, the, we like the Elite Core because of the number of cameras. We can do smaller cores and smaller cores, you know, twenty-five cameras, fifty cameras, whatever. That cost does go down, uh, but I think to cover a district our size, a hundred and eighty would be a pretty good start.
And if we added another cores, what he's saying for more schools?
If we add another core, you know, later, uh, there would be that same subscription cost. Yeah.
For a machine, okay.
And so.
And can you give an idea, just a general idea of how many cameras our schools have total? Like, what's the one-eighty?
Mr. Reiner?
Twenty-three hundred.
Twenty-three hundred, so one-eighty is a small percentage of that.
It is a small percentage of our cameras, and I think what we, you know, we would get together as a team and strategically figure out which ones we want to bring online.
Yep.
Uh, we wouldn't be able to do the whole, you know, district and every building, but I think we can concentrate on ones that we feel, uh, would be in the most need and most vulnerable. And, uh, that'd be coordinated through school staff and the school resource officer in that building.
Right. Mr. Munoz, yeah.
Um, so, you know, as a parent, you hear that some of our schools, from time to time, are shut down for safety reasons, right? So it makes a lot of sense that if something is going on by one of our schools, that parents feel real assured that, uh, that our local law enforcement has access to be able to sort of pinpoint, make sure our schools are safe and they remain so. Makes a lot of sense. Uh, my question, and this may be a technical question, has to do with, um, just privacy. And, you know, a lot of classrooms that are, that are, you know, inside as well as outside, what are the safeguards as far as privacy to make sure that access is only to, uh, to places where we want individuals to potentially, in, in the situation, have that access and other cameras? That, that's just.
It's all starting, and then I'll turn it over to Mr. Reiner.
Yep.
So, uh, a memo of understanding would be, uh, entered into with the FUSIS Center and the sheriff's office. And, uh, that would limit them, they would not have unfeathered access to any cameras within the school, inside the school building. The only ones we'd consider that would be the ones outside. So they would not come online and have the rights to view anything inside the school until we call them and notify them, or if it's a nine-one-one call that triggers the CAD system, which operates dispatch.
Okay.
So.
Yeah, as, as far as physical access to seeing those screens and whatnot, it would be controlled by the MOU and, uh, the logging process of the system to, to monitor and ensure that they were following it appropriately.
There's also, when we were at FUSIS, they talk about there's a trail. So the officers that are at FUSIS, with what, whichever camera they open up, there's a trail, and then they have to justify even the ones outside of the school. Why so? Um, as they were navigating that system, just to show us, then that officer had to go back and say, this was for a demonstration purpose. So there's a paper trail to all that, too, on the backend.
Thank you both.
Other discussion or? Dr. Bonebrake.
It just doesn't seem like five cameras at school is enough.
How many cameras again, sir? Um, to make sure Dr. Bonebrake heard the number of cameras?
So the, the Elite System, that core that we're looking at, it's a hundred and eighty cameras. And again, you know, we would look at, uh, what ones bring online. And again, that's why it's open for discussion. If we did two cores, that would be three hundred and sixty cameras. I think that would give us pretty good coverage. It wouldn't do the whole district. But, um, when you think about the cameras and what we'd be looking for, it'd be main hallways. We don't have any cameras in classrooms. So it'd be the main hallways, stairwells, and stuff like that. So when you think at Topeka High, you know, how many cameras internally would we? And what that allows them to do when we bring them online is they, if there's something going on within the school, they can track movement of the individuals and where they're moving to. And that's how we are able to dispatch a medical response, or a fire response, or a police response. So, uh, the number of cameras, again, that's open for, uh, discussion as to, you know, what we're comfortable with. And I say, when I say we, I'm talking about us, it's a collaborative effort. What we're comfortable with, is it one-eighty, is it three-sixty? Um, and then what's that, you know, cost bear and how we coordinate that.
So, Dr. Bonebrake, and we know later, under discussion, you guys may be discussing this further. As he's answering that question, it's more than five cameras, it's a hundred and eighty. So if they said, let's focus on the high schools, then they would divide those accordingly. Or if they said, let's focus on these vulnerable schools, because this is where we got calls for last year, that bad things were happening in the community. So, and, and, and so it could be that any one school could have twenty, or sixty, or seventy cameras. So, so it may not, but it's a hundred and eighty in total to start, and then evaluating that at the end of the year to say, what else do we want to add on after that? But it's more than five cameras.
Five and a half.
Ms. Schmidt.
Mr. Reiner, what did you say the total number of cameras was again? Twenty-three hundred?
You want to use those?
Yeah, ru- roughly twenty-three hundred. We got over two thousand cameras.
Okay, thank you.
So I think this is super important for the district to do for a number of reasons. I think should anything awful ever happen at one of our schools and we, as a board, didn't do everything we could possibly do, you know, to end it as quickly as possible, that would be a liability on all of us. The FUSIS Center is getting national recognition for what it is doing. National recognition. It is one of the first centers in the state of Kansas and is being pointed to by all the other law enforcements in Kansas. I know that we just signed a seven-year contract with Axon to integrate the body cameras for all the officers and all of that. My ask of you, Chief, would be twofold. Number one, in, you know, I would love to see a spreadsheet that had, these are our schools, and these are the minimum amount of cameras in a best, you know, best situation that I think we should have at each one. And then I would be interested in seeing data around what kind of calls or what kind of events did we have at each of those schools? So that, you know, maybe we decide we're going to do two elite cores, so we have 360. We want to make sure we have a little bit of coverage at every school, but maybe we put a little bit more coverage at schools that have historical data of having whatever type of issue. So I don't know if that is something that you could put together for us.
Yes, ma'am, I can definitely do that. A couple of things. When we talk about 180 cameras, that initial push, there would be some schools that we would not have online. Because, you know, we would want to be adequate, like Topeka High. They might, we might need 30 cameras online there. So the initial push of the one core, there'll be schools that won't be brought online. You talked about the integration of the body worn cameras. But right now, our body worn cameras, we will be, we're looking at upgrading those and, you know, that's something we're working on. Right now, our cameras, our body worn cameras cannot be integrated. But the new ones that Axon, and what that means is if there's an event, the FUSIS Center can activate the officer's body worn camera, even if they have not activated it. And then you get real-time pictures as to what that body worn camera is seeing at the present time. And they can also, as they're monitoring the FUSIS Center, say there's a danger around the corner, they can notify the officer because they're looking at the screen saying, hey, officer, around the corner in hallway A, there's two assailants armed with a rifle. And so they can give the officers that real-time information with that body worn camera integration.
Thank you. And I think we understand we can't have something everywhere. But seeing what like those minimum, like, you know, not dream state, like not money is unlimited. But, you know, if we could, what we, we'd like to see at the various schools and then being able to identify those higher risk areas. But then that information of where we'd like to get, you know, that would help us think as we go forward and budget in the future to hopefully get more cores on, to have that all covered, what we'd be looking at.
Yes, ma'am.
And I think, and I just think it's our duty, I think, we expect a lot from law enforcement, right? They lead the way. They, we, they have no fear, you know? They head into danger to keep everybody else safe. And I think it is our duty as a school district to make sure that we can keep law enforcement safe while expecting them to keep our students and our staff safe. And I feel like this is, you know, an investment towards that.
Mr. Munoz?
One more question. What sort of timeline are you looking at for this? If we were to move forward on this, what timeline do you think?
I think it would take about 30 days. Once we get the approval and the money is there and say, hey, let's do it. Within 30 days, we can start bringing cameras online.
So you're thinking maybe by the beginning of the school year, we might have something?
If it's approved and the dollars are allocated, we probably could have something. We could start bringing it online probably before school.
Okay.
Ms. Bulleye?
You said this was collaborative, and so have you talked to building leadership? And what has their response been? Are they encouraging to have something like this or?
Yes, ma'am. We've had some conversation with them, and they were invited to the FUSIS Center as well. I'll make sure that they get down there. And so the conversation as we go forward, when we say, just say, for example, Topeka High is going to be one we bring online, conversation will be with the principal and the staff and the SROs that are there to say which cameras would be most beneficial if there was events going on within the school. So school staff will be extremely involved because it's their school that we're trying to protect.
And you've talked to some of our principals. Are they wanting this? Is this something that they would like to see?
I've not gotten that feedback from any of the principals. Again, they were invited to go to the FUSIS Center. They were double booked, shall we say. And, but I'll work on getting them down there.
But, and as a next step, so our hope for you, as we entertain questions here, because it's down as discussion, but it's on the next agenda as well, that should you have the discussion and say, go forward and bring us back that plan that the leadership team met on, members of leadership, was it Tuesday? Tuesday, Reiner and Ms. Sharp and Mr. Dick met. And part of the conversation was, should you give that head nod, then Chief and Finance and all the other folks will sit around to look at, you know, what might this look like? What do we think schools should have? Certainly, all of us on leadership believe that this is a good step in the right direction of coverage. We already have cameras. What we're really saying is we need cameras to be connected to folks that can come out and help us when there's an issue. The incident he was referencing was this teacher that passed away at Topeka High. And so, you know, when we have significant issues, the sooner that we can get someone there, the better. So that's the position that administration is taking. But in terms of where and what schools and what does that look like, that's the other involvement. If you were to say, we're not really interested in the FUSIS, then we wouldn't be sending principals there. So your direction is most helpful. And the next board meeting will be an action piece when we give you that plan of here's where they might go. And you might say, nope, I want to see more cameras here or there. You can expect when you get that plan to get it before the next board meeting. So I'm giving you some preview of that. But principals don't come back till Monday. So when they come back Monday, then we'll, that's one of the first orders of business for the rest of the team. And I want to say thank you, Chief, for the opinion, for bringing this to us and all of that. I don't know if there are other questions, but.
Yeah, Ms. Schmidt has.
I have one more question, Chief. You said the current body cams are not compatible. What, can you tell us what it would cost? Or at least put that information in there to get our body cam so that they would be compatible with the system?
Yes, ma'am. I'll get that cost. And one of the other things is I've had basic conversation with the Sheriff's Office and maybe piggybacking off of when they buy body worn cameras that we add some, so we get a cheaper cost. The new body worn cameras require a cloud-based. And so instead of us purchasing our own servers and all that, again, renting space from the Sheriff's Office is, you know, I think that'd be a very cost-effective way for us to proceed.
Absolutely, and it's a win-win, I think.
Thank you, Chief.
Again, Chief, appreciate you.
So when it's brought up for cost,
Yep.
we'll have a better idea of how many cameras, because frankly, five at Topeka High isn't going to do it.
Well, it's not five at Topeka High, Dr. Bonebrake.
It's the five number.
I do think.
Well, don't we have 32 schools?
But not all schools would be brought online this first year.
Yeah.
So some.
So that'd be the school we attack.
So that, so that's, so that's, because we already have cameras at those schools. But as we roll this out, yes, the plan will tell you how many cameras are at Topeka High and at any other school. So the plan will outline that.
I'd just like to know how many are ideally.
And it'll be more than five. Got it. We'll be sure to bring that back the next time as well.
Is there other discussion on this discussion item? I would say I think it would be nice to maybe have a couple levels as far as one core versus two core. I do to, Kenny, I hate to agree with Dr. Bonebrake, but I do worry a little bit about putting a whole plan out there in an open meeting. Because, and so, you know, and I'll defer to Mrs. Whitman, how we wrap our head around the plan going forward without saying we have cameras that are monitored by FUSIS at three schools and we don't at these 27 schools or whatever. But, but I think the hope is to have that information come back in some way, whether that's in executive session or not next time.
And with our one-to-one meetings, because this can be the agenda topic for the next one-to-one meeting. So if you haven't had those or come to those, I would encourage that we have those. I know, Dr. Bonebrake, we just had our one-to-one meeting. But perhaps we'll have another one in the next week or two to, and this topic will be one of those. As we transition on, are we okay with, that concludes this report. And as Mr. Bucy comes forward, we're going to turn it back over to you, Dr. Schumacher, for the PowerPoint that's coming up next.
Yep. So we're going to skip 19 because that'll be after 20.2 and Mr. Bucy and the revenue neutral rate.
Yes, and I have two items related to this. One is the discussion item, one is the action item. Dr. Schumacher has limited me to 30 minutes for each, so. No, I will try to be as efficient as possible, but also be as informative as possible because I know not all of you look at mill rates and revenue neutral information every day. So you can go ahead and go to the first slide. So the reason that I'm here is that we need the board's permission, not really a formal vote. But I believe historically it has been recorded that way, just for the record, to send a notice of intent over to the Shawnee County Clerk to exceed revenue neutral. So as shown here, revenue neutral rate is simply just the estimated mill rate that allows us to collect the same amount of property tax revenue as we did the prior year. But it is based on the current year assessed valuations. So as you can imagine, and we'll look at some here in a minute, how revenue neutral and the mill levies have changed. But with appraised values going up year over year, as they historically have over the last several years, the revenue neutral rate will be lower than what you adopted the prior year and so on and so forth. Because the higher the appraised value, as we'll see, the more you can collect. And I've referenced a state statute there that just says that we have to have a public hearing to exceed R and R, we have to adopt a resolution. I'm sure most of you remember that. And then that is adopted by roll call vote. So property tax funds, we can levy property taxes in 18 funds. It was actually just 19, even in the memo that I sent you all. But a recently published document, they've changed that to 18. To pick a public schools only levies taxes in the five funds shown there. So the general fund is the 20-mill fund. So the first 20 mills of anyone's mill levy is going to go to the general fund. And that money does not go to us, that goes straight to the state. And that is distributed based on our base state aid per pupil. Any of you folks that have been in Finance Committee, that's Mr. Minkie's belly button number. That's what that is. So that is the general funds. Yeah, yeah. The supplemental general fund, and both of those are to fund operating supplemental general, or we call that the LOB, the Local Option Budget. That is a percentage of the general fund. Both of those are meant to fund operating expenses. Capital outlay, as you're probably aware, that's construction, renovation, equipment, you know, including IT, even some of our athletic equipment. Bond and interest, that's to pay our principal and interest on our bonds. And that is something I'll be talking a little bit about. So I included in the memo that our state aid percentage decreased. So KSDE, we were getting funding through KSDE for 65% of our bond and interest, and that has decreased to 61%. So what does that mean? That extra 4% instead of coming directly from the state, that now becomes a part of the mill levy. So as you'll see, that alone changes our mill rate for bond and interest significantly. And then finally, the special liability fund, that's to provide an excellent school district attorney for school district defense and employee defense. So one of the most important terms to understanding how mill levies are calculated is understanding the assessed valuation. So any of you that have ever received a property tax statement, you'll have an appraised value, that's just the fair market value of your home. That then is multiplied by 11.5% to come up with an assessed value. The other main player in the property tax game is commercial property, such as, you know, commercial office or golf course. We would levy 25% or you're going to calculate 25% of the appraised or the fair market value to come up with that assessed value figure. So mill levy calculations, this is just a sample of $100,000 home, just to give you an idea. I know that's small, I'm sorry. Give you an idea of how this is calculated. That's in your memo as well. The important thing to note here, and the reason for showing you this, is because the general fund is calculated a little bit different because of the property tax exemption. That was 20,000 for a long time, then it went up to 40,000 and just recently went up to 75,000 with, it's supposed to be adjusted for inflation every year. So again, the higher that exemption number goes, which has really been a target in legislative sessions, property tax, the higher that exemption goes, that does take away from the property taxes that are levied. But that just shows you how to calculate one if you wanted to and lets you know again that one mill will collect $1 of tax for every $1,000 of assessed value. So after you get to that assessed value figure, you're dividing that by 1,000 after you multiply it by however many mills are being levied. But you can go ahead. So Shawnee County data and trends. These are the five districts within Shawnee County. So from left to right, you've got Seaman, Silver Lake, Auburn Washburn, Shawnee Heights, and Topeka Public Schools. As you can see, we are much lower than the other districts. I don't have anybody's information for this upcoming year, but I did put in there what our proposed maximum is, and I'll speak to that a little bit more in a minute. But we have to set a ceiling that we send over to the county clerk. And we cannot exceed that without having to go through and republish or worry about if we did exceed it, we would have to pay some of those funds back. So again, this is a max ceiling. This gives us some cushion to work that down before we actually adopt and have our hearings on September 4th. But I believe it's a good starting place, Mr. Minkie. Now, we've only had the budget software, I think, for seven or eight business days, but we feel comfortable with that ceiling and hope to work that down a bit. So next slide, please. So this, again, this one's really tiny. Sorry, this is a lot of information. But this is just to provide you with the revenue neutral rates per fund so you can kind of see where the big jumps were and what we're proposing. So the biggest jumps that you're going to see are in capital outlay and bond and interest. So bond and interest, I spoke to, we're losing 4% of state funding, so that automatically increases the mill levy. And our principal and interest is increasing on our bond amortization schedule. But capital outlay, we are allowed to levy eight mills. We currently have that set in our proposal at the maximum eight mills because our buildings aren't getting any newer. Somebody wants a FUSIS system. So we, I think we're definitely going to need more capital outlay dollars as we move forward. You know, these, these big major maintenance projects are just really increasing in cost. So that's why that was ratcheted up a little bit. So, and it's just important to know that we don't take this lightly. You know, we're fiduciaries and stewards of taxpayer dollars, but it's a balancing act because we also have to adequately fund our schools. So, next slide, please. So the real reason why I'm here is to get your permission to send this form over to the Shawnee County Clerk. So nothing needs signed tonight by any of you. The only signature required are by the board clerk and the chief financial officer. Again, this just sets the ceiling for the maximum mill rate, the total mill rate that we can levy as a district, as well as our hearing date, time and location. And that is slated for September 4th right now. So next slide, I'll talk about that a little bit. So we have to be very strategic in how we organize these things because if we, if we miss dotting one. because if we if we miss dotting one I or crossing one T, we have to go through this whole process again. So this just outlines the required steps. A couple of them to note, um, and the reason I'm here tonight is because by July twentieth is what the statute says, that's a Sunday this year, so by July eighteenth um is when we have to send that intent over to the Shawnee County Clerk. After the clerk mails out individual taxpayer statements on July twentieth, um, we have a window to to go ahead and publish our revenue neutral and our budget hearing publications, and Topeka Metro News, those have to be out there and on our website for ten days. And our schedule backs us up to September third being the tenth day so we can have our revenue neutral hearing first, followed by a budget hearing uh where the budget is not voted on then. We we would vote on the revenue neutral by the roll call vote, uh, but the budget would be voted on in the general meeting that follows, we can do it all in the same night. And then the following two items there are just deadlines for when we have to send our budget packet over to KSDE and the Shawnee County Clerk. So with that, I will stand for any questions that you might have.
Are there questions for Mr. Bucy?
And Mr. Bucy, you're asking for permission to send notice uh of intent to exceed the revenue neutral?
Yes, ma'am.
Yep, so if there's no questions, we can move back up to action uh item number nineteen point one. And uh, I do believe we have a motion for that.
Mr. President, I move to grant permission to send notice of intent to exceed revenue neutral rate for twenty twenty five, twenty six to the Shawnee County Clerks.
Is there a second on that? Dr. Bonebrake, thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll move to a vote.
And the vote is open. It's not, listen. All right, all votes are in, and Dr. Beeson is not present at the vote. Everyone voted yea, the motion carries.
Thank you. And I think that's it.
That concludes our reports.
So what do board member com- comments? Uh, Dr. Beeson's still not, okay, uh, Dr. Bonebrake. Uh, Dr. Bonebrake, microphone.
In order to maintain a communication neutral rate, I don't have much to say.
Great, it's a huge deficit now. Uh, Ms. Bulley. Yes, ma'am. Yeah, yeah, yep.
So um, a few committee reports. Since we met last time, we had a technology committee report or um meeting and talking about Windows eleven coming on and some of the, you know, complications of getting that done, particularly since we have so many computers out in the district right now. So there'll be new passwords, and they have to be very strong passwords, and they need to be changed often, so uh people will have to get used to strengthening those passwords and changing them enough time to keep our system. How many com- computers that are out in the district? Um, I'm not sure what that number is, but this year it's more than it has been in the past. So we do have students that have computers out this year, and we have staff, I think staff needs their computers in the summertime. I'm still a little concerned about students having computers out in the summertime when we need to be getting them ready for a school year. But teachers do professional development, lesson planning, curriculum planning, and so computers are kind of important for our staff. But when they come back in, they got to get loaded up with this Windows eleven quickly, and so that will just cause um complications, rush, uh, concern for our IT department. So uh, I don't know if there's a way to collect those or have them bring those in sooner. Might be something we can think about, but um. And I think, I think the technology committee, we're we're kind of um leaning towards a FUSA, thinking that's an important step to take for our district. Um, and we also talked about bringing esports on. And uh, members of our board who are on the technology committee got a survey on the unit of games that will be used in our district. So each district has the opportunity to pick a package of these games, and the package that we picked, um, board members were able to give feedback on if we want to do that or we don't want to do that particular game so that we can um have some say about it, just like we would our curriculum. And so that that survey has been taken, and I'm sure we'll discuss that at the next meeting. Um, uh. Sheldon, a meeting took place, and we talked about the grant that they're writing, and we received pieces of that grant to approve, to look at, and they will have it ready to turn in. They're doing just a really nice job of getting all that information together. And I know they'll have it turned in on time, and we're very, very hopeful of receiving that five-year grant. So that will be exciting when we do, we should have a little, you know, little poppers and say we're really happy to have our um youngest of our students will be funded and and ready to go, so that will be really great. And then I just had a comment. Um, as I was listening to this month's school board, state school board meeting, one of the things they brought up that I think is probably really important for our district to be thinking about as well is Microsoft has realized that with AI, they really don't need programmers anymore, they don't need coders anymore. And they are starting to lay off all of their coders in that industry because AI is able to support that coding for their company. And within the next six months, they are expected to lay off sixty percent of their coders in in their company. And other companies are following suit. So Dr. Watson was talking about, to the state school board, about shifting thinking about what we're preparing our students for. Because we have been a real push on STEM and a real push on coding. And is what he was talking to the board about was it's really hard to predict the future, but it's looking like those particular areas are not going to be something we want to um push in education across the state because there aren't going to be those jobs there anymore. And so we're really in a situation where we're not sure what our future is in jobs with AI. And I just thought it was very interesting, listening to him say to his board, we need to be thinking, and his suggestion, which I thought was even interesting, was we really need to push the humanities and the social studies in our curriculums. Because we need people who can work with people and understand why they're working with people to drive our society forward. So I just wanted to put that out there because I just thought it was kind of a call that education future is changing right underneath our feet. And we really need to be paying attention to it to help direct our education for our students to make them successful. So that's my comment, thanks for listening to that.
Thank you, Ms. Bulley. Uh, Mr. Tatum.
Well, in contrast to Mrs. Bulley, I don't think I have quite as much to share on any committee uh, report outs. Um, I know there was a TPS Foundation Committee meeting on Tuesday that I was unable to attend um because I had another meeting scheduled at that time. But when I think back over the past couple weeks, uh, I believe we've had a policy committee meeting since um the uh last board meeting in June. Um, and of course, a lot of the work that uh the policy committee has done recently um has resulted in the uh cellphone policy. And we we talked about that earlier with uh Dr. Gray. Um, the the other thing that we're doing, I mean, the the policy committee is really just, we're we're just uh under uh Mrs. Whiteman's leadership, we're kind of blazing through cleaning up policies um that need some attention and haven't been looked at for a number of years. And I think, if I remember correctly, I think we are looking at um in our last meeting, cleaning up some of the the uh uh policy language surrounding uh medical equipment. Um, if I remember correctly, uh, so that's, that's pretty much the size of uh of of that. Other than that, I I was just wracking my brain.
You have a new director in the foundation, right?
There there, yeah, yes, but we met him. The Mrs. Bulley's asking about the the director of the new foundation.
Introduced publicly.
I I don't know.
On our board, I was just.
Yeah, he was introduced at a meeting.
About so, yeah, about so.
That's right.
Yeah, glad you were thinking about that. Anyway, that's actually all I have, I'm done.
Thank you, Mr. Tatum. Mr. Munoz.
Just to add to Mr. Tatum, I think at our last policy, uh, last policy meeting, we talked about cardiac emergency response plan, right, which we got to have in in plan, loss prevention program, as well as safety and accident prevention program, so a lot of that. And we focused on uh food service policy, so all of that. It, most of it, majority of it was uh cleaning up uh the language, just to make sure it is up to par. Um, other than that, I I would say that early today, stopped by Chase Middle School to uh stop with Mrs. Gibbs on her program. All volunteer, all fundraised by her and and her her little group to help support our students. So I think I'm I'm incredibly indebted to individuals like her and others who are working to keep our kids engaged uh during the summer. You you can never do too much to sort of make sure the kids are working together, looking to work hard, focusing on 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 ideas like discipline, which lead to success for them, not just physically in 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 sports, but also in the classroom. So thank you to her and to all the others who have put that program on now for a number of years. And and the other last thing which I'll mention is that to keep, if you're looking in the news, there are a lot of issues that are going on. Um, if you value public education, I know everyone here does, and those who are listening, uh, just be aware of the issues that are going on. Um, and and when you feel passionate, contact your local representatives and make sure that they hear how important public school is. Um, and and make sure that individuals hear that uh that we value it, and it's important for the success of our kids and for our communities. And and without that support, um, you know, it, I'm not sure what would happen, but uh it's important for us to speak up when when things, issues like that pop up in the news, that's all.
Ms. Schmidt.
So really quickly to build on Sue's comment about AI. Um, this week I was made aware of, there is actually a citizens group that um scours the web for elected officials and public meetings. And as you know, Zoom and things like that create transcripts, and they summarize those meetings. And this group uses AI to go read those meeting notes, those transcripts and those summaries, and actually creates news articles based on those that they're publicizing. And our school board meetings are in those, so it was very interesting. I had somebody send it to me, and I started looking what was existed for Topeka, Shawnee County, and we have, our board meetings are there. But but taking that with a grain of salt, right? AI is AI, i- it's still a computer, it hears what it hears, you know? Um, we are piloting using AI for taking minutes. And what it hears is not always accurate. And so it still takes a human component to go through that has a thinking, um, a critical thinking brain to go through and make corrections and look at some of that. So I think as long as maybe, you know, not pushing the the programming stuff, but as long as we can focus on teaching our children and our students critical thinking skills, I don't think we can ever go wrong in in whatever that is, in whatever the future brings. Um, one of the policies that I think we do not have, Ms. Whiteman, but we want to look at either creating, um, is a policy about getting computers back from students um district wide during the summers. Um, it is a lot of work for our IT team to try and wrangle that stuff. Um, a lot of times because it is equipment that is lent to people, and they are not personally invested in it, it is not always treated the best. And so when they walk back day one of school and the equipment is broke, um, it places a lot of strain on our IT team to try and get that up and running so those kids are ready to hit the ground as soon as the teachers are presenting information. So I know in technology, we kind of talked about maybe looking at creating a policy because we do not have one that exists. Um, setting the standard that devices will not go home with students over the summer. And then that would give our um IT team a little breathing room and the ability to not at least have that on their plate along with everything else come into July and August. Um, other than that, summer's going fast. So we're gonna be back in school before we know it, I don't have anything.
Summer's going fast, but I'm gonna go slow through my fill that deficit that Dr. Bonebrake left. So personnel, we had a brief meeting, we did discuss the job fair that occurred just yesterday. I believe, is that right? The job fair was yesterday? Um, we uh were successful in um hiring on quite a few of our classified staff, and we continue to work for on certified staff. Um, but we do feel good about going into the school year from a personnel uh standpoint. And then I just have a few shout outs, these were in our, um, most of these were in our board update, but educators rising, we had two young people. Um, Ellie um earned a top ten for lesson planning and delivery in the fine arts. And this, then Ms. Bowling got a first place um in the children's literature pre-K category. Um, and I've actually gotten to see this book in person, and it is um pretty fantastic that she put together and won first place. And then we had students, uh, one student from Topeka High, Mrs. Gearing, and then maybe like six students from Topeka West, so Mrs. Tooms, who was one of our seniors of the month, Mr. Clark, they had a duo performance, Ms. Saunders and Mr. Westfall, they had a duo performance. And then Phoebe, uh, Kivrin and Joey, they had also, all these students got superior ratings at the ITF, the International Thesbian Festival. That was in, I think, Indianapolis. Um, and then um I, I don't know, AI knows that my house likes thespian. So on my uh social media, maybe like two days ago, the um um educational educational theater association, so they're the group that does like ITF and these thespian troops. They have um premier communities for theater education, and Topeka West actually was one of these back in two thousand twenty-two. But we were, Topeka Public Schools was named uh for this year, premier community for theater education. Um, and so that's a national, and it's a three-year recognition. So um, I know that there was some hard work by somebody because it's an application process, and um I don't know who that was, but I would like to thank them because that's a, that's exciting for a parent of a thespian. Um, I know, and I know maybe they're at least a former thespian that's now graduated. Um, I know that's a big deal to them, so a shout out to them. Um, one last shout out to the communications team, I would agree with Ms. Bulley. They do a bang up job for me selfishly when I'm going somewhere maybe I haven't been before or to an event where maybe I'm a little bit nervous, I know there's a smiling face from communications there. And I generally just harass them, and it makes me feel better. from communications there, and I generally just harass them, and it makes me feel better. And then I think, just one follow-up, you know, when we talk about like the cell phone policy and trying to engage parents, I think those parents that maybe are a little, that are, have a little bit more engagement, those should be some of the people that we go after for our PTOs and our DCAC, I think that's one of the things that sometimes we struggle with is engaging some of our parents, so if there's a way that we can wrap them in and say, you know what, we want to talk about the cell phone policy, but also here is when PTO meets for your school, because I value your opinion, and your voice will be heard, it's heard now, but you can continue to tell us the things that are important to you. And I think that's all I have. So with that, I just need a motion to adjourn.
Mr. President, I'd like to motion the meeting adjourned.
And a second, Mr. Tatum, and a raise of your right hand in favor of adjourned, and it is unanimous, thank you.